Good morning, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of the executive. Item one is minutes of our last meetings. Are there any objections to matters of fact, or can I sign them as a true record? No objections? Thank you very much. Item two, apologies for absence. Fiona?
Thank you, Chairman. I've had apologies from councillor Nick Palmer.
Thank you very much. Item three, declarations of interest. Any received before the meeting?
None, Chairman.
Any to be cleared at the meeting, councillors? Thank you very much. We will go on to item five, questions from members of the public.
Thank you, Chairman. We had one question from Mrs Cathy Smythe, who has asked how many council properties and housing association properties located in Waverley were sold under the Government's Right to Buy scheme between 1st of April 2012 and 30th of March 2019. And she's asked for the number by each year. I believe councillor Rosman has a response.
Thank you, Leader. The response is that exactly 100 Waverley council homes have been sold under the Right to Buy scheme in the seven years between April 2012 and March 2019. Broken down by financial year, I could give you the individual years, but they are very similar amounts, save for 1617, when it did peak at 23. Waverley does not collect information about housing association properties which have been subject to right to buy or right to acquire, and Mrs Smythe would need to contact the housing associations directly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move to item six, revised statement of community involvement for planning, and I call upon the portfolio holder, councillor MacLeod.
Thank you, Leader. This document, as it's explained in the papers, is a required document. We have to update this statement for August of this year. It's a fairly straightforward document. It's a well-written document. It explains very clearly what the council does in terms of involving communities and allowing people to comment on the local plans and planning applications. So I would recommend this to the council to be adopted. I make a more general comment, actually, which is not really specifically to do with this document. It's a more general comment in planning. I think that despite all the consultation we do, there's still a fair amount of scepticism in the general public about planning, but that's nothing to do with what Waverley does. That's to do with the way the planning system works, actually. And I know the previous administration was taking this up with the government, and it's my intention, together with the officers and together with the chief executive, to pursue how we can continue to take that issue up with the government. But in terms of this specific item, I'd recommend this document for approval. Thank you, Leader.
Any speakers on this item? Councillor Adams.
Sorry, yeah. Does the executive feel that the right balance is being struck between the raising of residents' expectations of planning outcomes and the restrictions already in place by the MPPF, LPP1, and planning law? Thank you.
Sorry, I'm not entirely sure I understand the question. I wonder if you could expand on it a little bit?
There... In the document, there is, near the beginning of it, actually, there is considerable amount of space taken up showing how much the executive, the council, is planning to spend on, actually not money, but on time, on actually reviewing and considering and acting on residents' comments, on all the sorts of planning documents. And I just wondered if that way it was expressed in the document was raising unreasonable expectations.
Okay, I do understand the question. I wonder if the officers would comment, as they actually wrote the document, if it'd be good enough to comment on that question?
I think that what we're trying to convey in the document clearly is that different stages, certainly in relation to planning policy documents, will go through stages of consultation. And what we want to try and do is to ensure that as we report those back through subsequent meetings of the council, so we might have a consultation early on in the preparation of a local plan, for example, and then move to another stage, and we need to get sign-off from the council to go, say, for a further consultation, then what we want to try and do is capture the essence of what's come out of the consultation first time round, so that members are aware of the sort of key issues that have arisen, and will understand where we've made changes, perhaps why we haven't made recommended changes to a document. And then the other thing is, obviously, when you get to the end of the process, and I'm talking just about local plans, when you get to the end of the process, there is an expectation that you submit to the government a document which captures the essence of what consultation you carried out. And that isn't to say you go through every single individual representation and respond to each one individually, but you've got to demonstrate that you've, how you've consulted, and the main issues that have arisen, and how those have been addressed. And that's the sort of thing that an examining inspector is going to be looking at when they move on to their part of the process.
Thank you. Councillor Follows.
Thank you, Leader. I think, the other thing I would just add to this, I think it's pretty clear that many of us find planning regulations quite opaque and sometimes difficult to get to grips with. And I think that extends more broadly to all residents. And so I think increasing the opportunity to allow residents to explore what these regulations are, how they work, and how they impact planning applications, I actually think will increase understanding and will actually make sure residents' expectations are at a more sensible level, and also councillors' expectations of planning are at a more sensible level. So I harshly commend any further endeavours to engage residents on matters of planning. Thank you.
Any further questions? Any further comments? In that case, the recommendation is that the executive recommends to the council the revised statement of community involvement 2019 be adopted. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, everybody. I've just been reminded that in my haste, the rush past, I skipped item five. I don't think there are any, but Fiona, are there any questions from members of the council?
None, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I'd hate to cheat someone out of their moment of glory. Okay, we're now on item seven, general fund financial outturn report 2018-19. I call upon the portfolio holder, councillor Merryweather.
Hello, everyone. So the report is for the 2018-19 financial year, and it's just for the general fund, one little, one of the pots of money that we have. And of course, it's for the last year of the prior administration, so nothing subsequent to the last elections. It's really broken down into three main chunks. The first chunk, starting at the bottom of page 35, on the heading revenue, describes the surplus against spending. The gross amount was 658,000, and the next few paragraphs of the report goes on to propose how that surplus be dealt with, the general thrust being that it is tucked away for specific reasons and specific purposes. So if you go to annex two, you'll find some tables there. The first table, adding up to 160, describes the carryforward of budgets into this year of amounts that were budgeted in the last year but not spent. And the second table, adding up to 241,000, describes tucking away money for emerging spending priorities that weren't necessarily recognised last year, but which we can usefully use the surplus to use for this year. The next section goes on to describe the surplus that we have for the business rate pilot. The total of that is approximately 612,000. 250 of that's been discussed previously and already earmarked for Surrey County Council consultation. The proposal is to tuck away another 100,000 of that for infrastructure planning. And anyone who's read my note from the Waverley Local Committee will understand that that's a priority, close to my heart at least. And then the remaining balance, 262,000, the proposal is to tuck that away for the business rate equalisation reserve, because we have no confidence that we are going to be able to continue to keep what little of the business rates we can still currently keep. Then finally, on the capital side of the budget, we have approximately 1.1 million pounds of general fund capital budget from last year, which we did not spend because of timing, not absolutely, we didn't need it, and the proposal is to carry that forward to the current year. That's it. Anyone got any questions?
Do we have any speakers on this item? Comments, councillors, questions? Can I then put the recommendation to you that the executive recommends to council that, sorry, I'm moving down one, slightly longer, that the outturn position is noted, and that we approve the budget rescheduling, including the transfer of surplus net costs of services to earmarked reserves, and the transfer of the additional business rate pilot funding to reserves, as so eloquently put by my colleague, and finally, that the capital rescheduling, as detailed in annex three, be approved. Is that agreed, councillors?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We will go now to item eight, the HRA Housing Revenue Account Financial Outturn Report. Councillor Rosman.
Yes, thank you, Leader. The report provides a summary of the 2018-19 financial outturn against budget for the housing revenue account. The full statement of accounts will be presented for approval by the Audit Committee on 22 of July 2019. Thank you.
Any speakers to this item? Councillors, any comments, questions? In that case, I put the recommendation to you for approval. It is recommended that the executive notes the outturn position on revenue 2018-19 in paragraph two of the report, and approves the HRA capital carryforwards of 2019-20, as detailed in paragraphs seven and eight of the report. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item nine, funding bid from Allfold Sports and Social Club. Councillor David Beeman.
Yes, thank you, Leader. It gives me great pleasure to present this report to the executive committee, in that it's a request for funding, not just from Allford Sports and Social Club, but also the Village Hall. Both these buildings require substantial improvement, and as the report outlines, and all the details are required, and it's with great pleasure, that I'm pleased to announce, and I'm pleased the local member is here to hear this news, that the Allford Sports and Social Club, which will now new require estimated cost of 55,500, and the Village Hall, 18,200, will be funded completely, mainly from an easement of 61,200, which is situs at in the capital coffers, and also by a contribution by Allford Community of 12,500 pounds. Leader, I recommend this for...
Thank you very much. Any speakers on this item? Councillor Dinas.
Thank you, Leader. I'm glad it was clarified. It also is for the Village Hall, although the report just says the sports club. It's not very often that we get to speak about a win-win situation. Allfold has experienced a large number of planning applications, and 13 years of local plan to go, we've exceeded the target. And having said that, Allfold has received virtually no benefit from the applications and developments. So this is giving something back to the community. I would like to thank the officers Kelvin Mills and Matt Lang for their efforts over the last six months on this issue, and ex-councillor Jed Hall, who has supported this initiative for considerable time, and councillor Beeman for bringing this paper before the executive. This is what we should be doing, investing in our towns and villages that have had to endure this additional housing. I'd like to hope that this is the first of many more applications that support our communities. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, councillor Dinas. Any more speakers? Councillor Follows.
Thank you, Leader. I concur with that entirely. I do hope the same is true there. I very just quickly want to say thank you to the officers for bringing the detail for this one back to us so that we could start to understand the process by this works, because I would agree, this hopefully is the first of many, and so many of the exec wanted to learn how it worked and how it was done, so that we can do this again. So, thank you.
Councillors, any more? In that case, I will put the recommendation to you that the executive agrees to support Allfold Sports and Social Club in their bid to improve facilities for the young and old of their community, releasing funding from the capital receipt that Waverley has paid for, that Waverley was paid for, as an easement to land on Allfold. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We go on to item 10, appointments to outside bodies. Appointments, as I'm sure most of you know, are made on a two-yearly basis, and Waverley appoints a number of representatives to various outside bodies. You have the list before you, but before I move forward, are there any speakers to this item? Councillor Potts.
Leader, thank you. It's clear from the follow-up paper that has now been issued on this item that there are a number of nominations still to be made. I noticed there are a number of to be confirmed positions here. And obviously, we're now two months, just over two months since the election, so I would like to know if the leader can please assure the public that we will be supporting these fantastic organisations with members who will have the same time, commitment, expertise and determination to really make these organisations succeed as the previous administration did. As I say, we, and I, have contacted the leader several times now, but unfortunately haven't had a response about the nominations and appointments to outside bodies. But I'm pleased that at least something is coming forward, and we can at least start to reassure some of these fantastic voluntary organisations that we really do value them. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Potts. I apologise that the response was not forthcoming in the time of which you hoped, but I do assure you that the answer to your question is yes. We take very seriously these bodies, and please forgive this somewhat young and new administration if it's taking a little time to shake down and find the right people to put in the right positions. Any more questions? Okay, councillor Seaborn? Okay.
Thank you, Leader. My question relates to the appointment of a Waverley representative to the Waverley Cycle Forum. I note that no appointment has yet been made, but that a Godoming councillor has been suggested because of the plans for the Godoming-Gilford Greenway. Can I ask if the Chair of the Cycle Forum, Christopher Peck, has been consulted on the full range of issues considered by the forum? As one of Waverley's two representatives to this forum over the past four years, I can say that the interests of all parts of the borough have been considered, including a potential Farnham to Farnborough cycle route, cycle provision in relation to the new Dunstfold Park development, linking the Dan's Link to the new Greenway proposal, and some excellent off-road routes in the south of the borough. Given the composition of the new executive with members exclusively from Farnham and Godoming, it concerns me a little that the thinking behind this appointment might not be recognising the breadth of projects tackled by this enthusiastic and committed body. I would have thought that the right person is someone with an enthusiasm for cycling and a willingness to support the forum in finding cycling solutions across the borough for all our residents. Thank you, Leader.
I think the deputy leader probably has a passion for cycling and might wish to answer that.
If only I had a space to store my cycle. No, the reason and rationale for this is predominantly because the largest section of the Greenway that's currently undergoing a feasibility study is the Godoming section of it, which is why it was deemed potentially a good idea for a Godoming councillor to take that up for that first two years while that study goes forward. I mean, we have personally no objections to that. It was mostly with the Godoming council that we have in mind is checking that they can commit the time to it fully. If they cannot, it will be reopened back up to the full field. I also do think that it doesn't matter where in Waverley that you come from in this, we are all coming to this with a Waverley Borough hat, and so we can appropriately look at the other geographies and bring it to the table, wherever we're from.
Thank you. Any more questions? Councillor Ellis.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Else, actually. That's quite all right. You should. So Waverley is an extensive rural borough with an increasing ageing demography. So given the paucity of our public transport provision for our villages, and reliance, which has developed on local voluntary self-help transport groups, who I'm sure will continue to receive the support so far given of this council, there is also a huge reliance on HOPA. Could you say, please, who will be the executive lead on HOPA? That hasn't been clear yet. And will that person take a direct interest in the organisation by fulfilling the role as the outside body Waverley representative, which also has not been decided as yet? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for your question. I think in all likelihood it will be councillor Beeman, and we intend to sort this out fairly quickly, but you will have to take our apologies that it is not in front of you already. We are equally embarrassed at our youth and our... Any more questions, comments from council? Councillor Merryweather?
Yeah, I'm just reminded that we're being televised, so I, picking up on what councillor Potts had to say, obviously, the list of organisations is not an exhaustive list of every good cause in the borough, and I want to reassure those organisations that I support and am a trustee of that even though they may not be on the list, they will still get my support.
Thank you very much. Any more questions, comments, councillors? In that case, I put to you the recommendations. Recommendation one, that the appointments as Waverley representatives to outside bodies for 2019 to 2021, as set out on the attached schedule, be approved. And secondly, that delegated authority be given to the leader of the council to approve the outstanding nominations marked as TBA on the attached schedule. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much, councillors. We will now move on to the next item, which is sundry appointments for the period 2019-20, it says on mine. Basically, a similar situation to the last one, some are, no, I don't think we've laid out any, yes, some are laid out and some need to be agreed earlier. Do I have any speakers on this item? Councillors, any comments? Sorry? Yeah. Sorry, councillor Merryweather.
Sorry, Mr Chairman. Yeah, just to register that, just because it's got TBA doesn't mean to say nothing's been done. Again, some of these, and some councillors, from the non-exec in particular, will be aware that they have been approached and invited. They're simply not on the list here because they haven't responded yet.
I understood also that such was the enthusiasm that we were having difficulty deciding on a suitable candidate.
No, not anymore.
I would also add that that list for particularly the Investment Advisory Board does include members of all parties who have not responded, not just those of the administration.
In fact, it's only members of other parties.
Councillors, any more comments? In that case, I put to you the recommendations. Firstly, that the sundry appointments for 2019-20, 2019/20, as set out on the attached schedule be approved, and secondly, that delegated authority be given to the leader of the council to approve the outstanding appointments marked as to be announced on the attached schedule. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much, everybody. I don't think we need to move to item 12, exclusion of the public, and I don't believe we have any issues to be henceforth discussed in exempt, so I will close the meeting. Thank you, everybody.